We configured the remaining items on our agenda and switched under our regular agenda number four to number three and moved number three to number four. In other words, we will talk about the skate garden expansion first, and then we will have the updates to the general plan. We have some students in the room, it would be courtesy to them so that they can go home and get their homework back. Right guys? Alright. So, this is the review of remaining issues regarding the skate garden expansion project, the central design staff report, and our consultants are also in the room.
Yep, back in December, the city council reviewed the planning commission's recommendations on the design for the skate garden expansion project which would occur on the stake or site just to the west of the existing skate garden park, kind of a triangular shape. It's frontage on Flynn Street. The city's been working on this design for quite a few years. It was about ready to go. It was out to bid and almost awarded for construction when the state pulled away from our redevelopment agency and we lost a major piece of funding for the project, so it was delayed. And then, in more recent years, the city's financial condition improved and revived the project and looked to revise the design to reduce costs somewhat. So that's the process that has been going on for the last eighteen months or so. So, in December, the council had a meeting to look at the revised design and make various decisions. And the council accepted the basic design recommended by the planning commission, which is pretty similar to the original expansion project, but kind of a slimmed down version, somewhat simplified. We also asked for direction on several specific aspects about certain bench, table, drinking fountain choices, and the council made decisions on those items, so those are not back before you. There are several items for tonight, kind of the remaining issues for some council direction. One was about lighting. The commission's recommendation was for minimal security lighting. There, some of the skate park users were interested in sports level, more intense lighting that would allow night skating. And some of us folks have come to the council and spoken on that topic. The commission felt that, on balance, that the security lighting was what they recommended. But the council was interested in considering sports lighting, so that's one of the issues for tonight. Another issue was the play equipment choices. And so, there's information in your packet, two different designing schemes. There are endless options about play equipment and specific components. Up there on the easel are the two options that we developed with our consultant and their Ross Recreation Sub-Consultant, of different choices, either of which looked like they would be good and workable in the skate park. There might have to be some adjustment in specific placement to make sure we have room for everything, but we're looking for some direction from the council if you'd like either please. They do include some things that sound fun and look fun, like ones called a wobble pod, a boogie board, swiggle sticks, a salt spinner. So, there's some, look like fun components and, you know, certainly not old fashioned, traditional, what seems more current design seems more appropriate for the skate garden park. But we're looking for direction on that. And the last, the last of the three issues is about fencing. The planning commission, there were some different perspectives at the planning commission on the subject. The majority of the commission felt that having fencing on the Flynn frontage was appropriate. The city's required to have six-foot fencing around the skating area. And the discussion, both at the commission and council, was, well, would it, other city parks do not have any fencing. It's unfortunate that we have to have that. And one idea that came up at commission and that seemed to have a lot of support at council was to retain the kind of the fence that divides the two properties currently. Maybe have wider gates, but don't fence the Flynn frontage. So, the commission, I think with hearing some input from site neighbors, felt that providing a fence on the Flynn frontage was appropriate. But I think there seemed to be a strong feeling on the council that to consider this other idea. So, those are the three issues that are in front of you. And I think there are some people from the public to speak, including someone who has to leave quite soon. I think she already did.
Still here.
Oh, she's still here, yeah. So, that concludes the staff report, the consultants are here to, and are ready to present the aspects of the project.
Alright, are there questions of staff or consultants? How long is the presentation?
It can be very quick, it's just a refresher really. Must advise that it's, I think, with that new mark.
I can do that too.
To be respectful of the folks who are here, I think keeping it short and then we'll let, then we'll hear from them.
There's ten slides, I think.
And then move forward, so we'll hear the presentation first.
I was, I think Kenyon went over it, but I'll just, that's just a refresher, the background, the, you know, about. At the December meeting, the 2014 plan, the differences where we simplified it with one pathway from Flynn to the existing park, a lawn area, a natural area adjacent to the gun club site, and then expanded community garden area. So, in December, the council identified these items, the picnic tables to go with the Sonoma County probation, redwood, locally built tables, benches to match what's out there now, the drinking fountain with a ball filler which was requested at the planning commission meetings. And then the two items in red are the play equipment and lighting. So, the play equipment, we met with the play equipment manufacturer and distributor, and they came up with a lot of suggestions. And as you can see, there's a lot of color options that are more, a little more modern and fresh than the traditional play equipment. And the design elements are quite variable. And then, in addition, the moving of rock is part of the plan. And then the last item is the issue of lighting. We got proposals from two different lighting manufacturers in addition to our lighting sub-consultant, one of whom, one of the manufacturers indicated that they could provide sports level lighting sufficient for skate, night skating use, using fifteen-foot poles, and it provides a moderate level of light. And then the other manufacturer indicated you really need higher level, like ball field style lights, and that was their proposal. So, Jeff can get into that if there's questions regarding that. So, and that's, that's it.
Okay. Did the presentation raise any questions, or should we move to public comment? Alright, we'll hear from the public. Anybody would like to come forward and speak on this?
Good evening, Timothy Lane with the skate park. We'd just like to put in my two cents and say that I believe that keeping the fence on the inside is an excellent idea in terms of just maintaining security and safety. I personally feel like the Flynn area would be more appealing and look better without a fence. I understand that there's other issues that are related, but if maybe if we had some landscaping along the edge that kind of defined that, that area and allowed the folks that live in that neighborhood some privacy, then that would maybe be a nice compromise. In addition, I feel that I'm very supportive of the lights and view that this, without further information, that it seems like the fifteen-foot poles would be adequate lighting for skateboarding. They have lights at the St. Helena skate park, and I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I believe that that's, that's what they have there, and it's very, it's very nice. Not sure if we would want to consider maybe having a timer, or how that, the timing of the lights would be, but in certain skate parks, if you're riding in a bowl and then the lights suddenly turn off, it can be dangerous, so maybe have the lights flash a couple times, five minutes before they turn off. Have to have some type of warning system, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Do you know the hours of the St. Helena park?
Lights turn off at nine o'clock at St. Helena and in San Francisco.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Ten.
Ten, ten o'clock at St. Helena, nine o'clock in San Francisco.
Hi, I'm Oliver, and it's actually my birthday today. I'm seventeen, and I've been going to this park since it first opened, and I've pretty much spent almost all my available free time there, and I love it. And it means a lot to me that you guys are considering this, and I mean, lights would be a great improvement there, and I'd like to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thanks, happy birthday.
I'm Brandon Carroll, thanks for coming out and letting us speak about this awesome opportunity to have lights at skate park. From, you know, my perspective, I'm all for it, I can see why people wouldn't like it, but I think we've waited long enough, and it's definitely a time for some lighting. I think one of the great things about having lighting is that it would be one thing that Sebastopol is known for in the skating community especially because, you know, I drive all the way up from here to Sacramento to skate Granite Skate Park, and, and they have lights as well, so they're, that's like one of the main skate parks known in Sacramento. And it'd be really cool to, you know, say that you're from a town with an amazing skate park with lights, because that's, that's what it's, that's what it is to me, is just like one of the best skate parks I've ever skated. And being able to skate it at night in that kind of environment is just, it's kind of a different feel. Kind of makes you feel a little bit cooler in a way, like a little bit of a better skater, I don't know. Some people like ice skating as well because the weather is different, you know, it's a little bit cooler, nicer for skating. And I think it would be a great attraction from, you know, people who used to skate and stopped skating because it was too hot and they were just kind of over it. Or people from out of town just wondering where they can skate, and it's, you know, at night. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Kaiser, and I live on 396 Flynn Street. I think the skateboard park is a great thing for the kids to have. But some of the issues that are on the expansion agenda for the fence, if it's okay, I'm just gonna kind of read or I'm gonna begin with writing. I'm writing in response to the skateboard expansion issues. The current plan for fencing to remain on Flynn Street is a good plan. To remove this fence would be a big mistake. More traffic would be invited on the street, which is not a through street, it was not designed for traffic other than for residents to reach their homes. There are no sidewalks, already a safety issue. Removing the fence would increase walking traffic in this area. Even if sidewalks were created, lights added to this park would again change the dynamics and increase chances for crime on the street. Families and children use parks more in daylight hours, but for future teenagers that really would like to do night skating, I understand your perspective. But from our perspective, adult activities and undesirable behavior are more likely to occur at night. Sound and safety become more of a concern. Everything is more amplified at night. We already hear them making enough noise during the day, so this would really add to that. Please do not put our neighborhood at risk by removing this fence on Flynn Street. Do not increase the noise we already deal with during the day by adding lights to this park. I have nine people signing this that also feel the same way I do. The one that did not sign likes this, if I have time, will leave a quick note. Our family is concerned about the current park plan about to happen at the skateboard park. We're concerned about the possible, possible late night bright light to be installed, allowing kids to stay out late around the hours, causing extra loud noises to the residences on Flynn Street. We also are concerned about it being open after sunset, allowing kids to be unsupervised and getting themselves into troubles with drugs, et cetera. And this was Lucy Scott of Isabella on Flynn Street. Do you know Hamilton, who has to leave, for a long time?
Please go ahead.
Oh, Miss Reed, she was extensive staying, but she said, "The stadium lighting will certainly benefit the contractors, but this was supposed to be a quiet park. Little by little, it is turning into something else. There is no crime there, why is there a need for security lights? Having lighting at night will simply encourage people to hang out. I've heard about the beer bottles, et cetera. Can't be dumped on the neighbors. The city created this, and they should take responsibility. There would be light pollution with the kind of lighting that has been proposed, no matter what is planned. This is how environmental we're aware."
Thank you. Any other members of the public who should speak on this? Alright, we'll close public comment. So, we have the three items. We have, we have to ask for direction on the play equipment options, the lighting options, and the fencing options. And then, staff is asking for direction to proceed with the development plans and specifications for the bidding process. So, I will propose that we start at the top and decide on the play, well, I don't know, this is my prime, might be the most fun one. Decide on the play equipment options. Anybody have any thoughts on, on that item?
I have some questions for staff.
Oh, sure.
I haven't seen police here, but I'm wondering if police had any comments on the after dark skate park options.
Yeah, I think a council member emailed the police chief about lighting, and I believe the police chief expressed some concern. It looks like the city managers committee could review that.
And what fence are we talking about in the new Flynn Street?
There's an existing, what the speaker was referring to is that there is an existing six-foot tall chain link fence along the Flynn Street frontage, and they were advocating that that fence or a similar fence be of that location.
And do we have, will we be adding sidewalk to that area, or will we be improving the property without having sidewalk?
Not adding sidewalk. I think the original plan had more sidewalk improvements, but that was a cost-saving item. And there's very few residents back there, so putting in a sidewalk, there, I believe there's a sidewalk on the other side of Flynn, was, yeah, it costs a bunch of savings to not, you know.
That's a lot. But it's opposite, it's a part of.
Like at first, Sharon talks, and then next to that one, and then these.
Yeah, there's a texture, if you want to see it.
So, there's no, that's, the top one is looking at the gun club, that's closer to the parkway. And then the middle, and then, it's not quite like that. There is an existing fence with, on the upper right corner, an existing chain link fence, and no sidewalk.
I think there's a sidewalk on Flynn on the other side at the end of the street, but not at the beginning of Flynn.
And by city limits, you park closed by a certain time, you, you regular park, ice park?
Sunset. And that's in this park, it's hardly, it's not part of it.
Any other questions?
Well, actually, it's a comment, just to expand a little bit on the comments by the planning director. I did email Chief Weaver today, and he sent a very comprehensive reply. And he expressed both concern, he expressed both concern and support for this. And I have to say, I concur with him. He expressed support in that it's important that the city of Sebastopol provide recreation opportunities for our youth. And we have a beautiful facility, and we've heard from some of the people who use that park, and I've heard from many others, so it's not just these three people here tonight. And he did, though, express concern about that the, because this would expand the hours of operation of the park, it might create additional enforcement efforts. But he said if he had to make a choice, he would support it, and that we could take kind of a wait-and-see attitude, and that maybe an initial closing time of eight PM might be warranted to see how it works out. I guess, probably a better way to put it, I know a lot of cities that I did the research on close at eight PM, and then in the summer they close at 10 PM, because often they're still light at eight PM. So, you know, we have the model of St. Helena, I would think that, God, we would want to be just like St. Helena at least, right? But, or better. But, but, you know, it's pretty commonplace to have night light in skate parks. It's not, we're not being weird, we're not setting a precedent. I provided all of you with color, I think I got enough of everybody, color, two-page color document showing night lighting of sports facilities by a company called Musco in Idaho. And you can see that the light just drops right off at the edge of the facility. It's not bleeding out a lot of different ways, you know, a lot of long distances. And in fact, the report from our consultants, from Quest Engineering, states that the narrow width of the skate garden allows us to achieve target light levels using fifteen-foot poles without, with, while having zero light trespass off the property. So, you know, between the documentation that you provided and the research I did on the internet, I feel, and I share the concerns of the people on Flynn Street because when there's night baseball games at Ice Park, I don't need to turn on my bedroom lights. I can read a magazine by the lights at the baseball field, not to mention the bat cracking and the air horns and the crowd roaring. But you know, that's, that's part of living in an urban environment, that's part of being a community that supports these types of recreational facilities, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to deal with it. And, and I don't think, I think it's incumbent upon everybody involved in this project to ensure that no light gets off the property. And basically, you have a dead zone light by the buffer, the park area between Flynn and the skateboard park. I calculated the distance last time, I forget what I came up with, but the park depth is, any idea off the top of your head? Hundred feet? So, we've got a hundred feet to play with at least, and I, I don't think we'll go even into ten percent of that based on what I've seen feasible with directed sports-type lighting. I mean, they have these issues everywhere, and, and they've developed light systems, the light systems I was looking at were made for LED, low energy use. Talking to the planning director during the break, it'd be great if they figured out some way to run them with solar. They could really be an example and model for recreational facilities. But again, I do appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. I see them myself.
As long as we're on lighting, let's just continue with lighting.
I would have my paper.
I thought we were too. We're taking on lighting first. No, we'll circle back.
Such a flexible idea, thinking.
We'll do the hard ones first.
Can you help me understand, so I see the, while thirty poles are meant for skate garden parks, the narrow width of skate garden allows us to achieve target light levels using fifteen-foot poles while having zero light trespass off the property. Is that the RAB option, or is that the ZERER engineers' option?
That's R A B.
R A B, RAB, great.
Yeah.
So, it's also the cheapest cost of the option.
Well, that, that cost is materials only, so you have to double it. So, but it is, yeah, it's relatively inexpensive. Those lights were the ones we had for the general lights to begin with, so.
I think originally the councilor Eater and I were strong advocates of looking at the light options. I'm grateful that you guys brought back light options that work. And I remember talking about thirty-foot poles, very concerning because they're light leakage, now we have fifteen-foot pole options, brings that down. How much is the skate garden cost so far?
Well, I had to look back at what the budget was. Substantial amount.
Two million? Yeah, two million?
I think it was getting up there.
Yeah.
Right, not to mention about, what, fifteen years?
So, you know, I, I support the people likes, I support zero light leakage. I not agree with eight o'clock, but would go with the chief's recommendation of eight o'clock to see how that works, because it's a good way to inch that in slowly. I really like ten o'clock, but I do if there's residents there, and we choose, the skate park is a big change, lights are a bigger change, how a change equals lives should be incremental. And I would love a ten PM, ten times we approve the lights. I have to go with the police chief's recommendation of eight PM for us to engage that at a slow, in a slow rate and make sure that we don't move too fast. We move slowly to ensure that we are considering all the options. And we really want to make sure that the most important thing is that we're protecting our garden equal. I'm doing that. So, I support the idea of fifteen-foot RAB light poles within eight PM closing time in the winter. And I guess in summer, it's turned up to nine, in the winter, so then that will just stay open till sunset with no lights. And of course, if we put in lights, I think what we heard about the flashing to start, that's safety measure. Is that currently in the bid? I don't think it's spec. That's gonna be some kind of special controller to show me the cost of one of the lights, yeah. But we should look into that as a final detail.
Well, perhaps there's a way that this could be a place for some creativity, and maybe it's not the overhead lights flashing, maybe it's some other alarm that's visual and oral.
Or a whole on the front of the room.
Like, you know, one of those things where the separate gate's getting ready to die.
A klaxon, no, I don't know. Mary Spender?
I support the fifteen-foot lights. I was very glad to see that this came back, with the lighting idea being successful. Fifteen feet, I think, especially given the additional material we have from council member Eater, that shows we're not going to have, what you say, light leakage. I think we have a good situation to allow that nighttime use. Appreciate two council member eaters connecting with the police chief and forwarding his response on to us so that we understood his concerns, although he's not here, James isn't here anymore. I think we start with the eight PM closing time in the winter time and see how it goes. If the enforcement issues aren't a staffing problem for the police chief and there aren't issues with the neighborhood, then I would like us to be open-minded to have this come back for further extension of the hours. I support the fence being around the skate I support the fence being around the skate garden itself for the purposes of our liability, and the Flynn Street part being open from the street rather than the fence being maintained, because that is the way our parks are available in this community. So people have access to the green space. The concern I have is that it isolates the skaters in the nighttime from everybody else, but I guess for security reasons, we have to do that. The daytime, we talked last time about there being an opening, some kind of gate that can be shut at whatever is the appropriate hour. I think it's going to be helpful to the Flynn Street neighbors to have that green park space there as the buffer zone, and with the fence separating the more intense active use and the later night use. And hopefully, for our police department, there aren't going to be security concerns or safety concerns or other issues for either area. As to play equipment, I guess we're just going to reserve that conversation for a little while later.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're talking all over the place.
Councilmember Glass, are you done thinking? Gray.
Sometimes that's a slow process. So I'm in, in support of 15-foot lighting, although I have to say, I'm a little bit skeptical of the concept of no light leakage. I mean, really? You know, we're going to be able to see the light from other places, so I think we need to be mindful of that and, and think about, you know, the impact of the neighborhood, on the neighborhood. And so it's not just the, it's not just the sound in the neighborhood, but, you know, we also need to think about the residents of the neighborhood and how much is the light going to be pouring in their house. So we need to see, you know, take that into consideration if we're thinking about expanding the hours from 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock to 10 o'clock, because I don't think I'd be very thrilled about having lights kind of in my space late in the evening. So we need to see how that really works, I think, and we need to work with all of the youth, those youth people out there who are going to be using the park responsibly, and I know working with all their friends to keep that park a really positive experience for the community and everybody, because they've done a really good job with that so far. So I'm in support of the 15-foot lighting and, but I say, let's keep an eye on, you know, how this is impacting the neighborhood, because no light leakage sounds a little bit like marketing to me.
Okay, on the lighting, I too am in favor of the RAB units. I have experience with these, not these particular models, but this manufacturer, and it's very high-quality lighting. It's, it's the good stuff. The, there's a phrase here on the spec sheet, dark sky approved, the International Dark Sky Association has approved this product as a full-cut-off, fully-shielded luminaire, and it's lead-approved. So those are two fairly, well, quite rigorous standards that these, that these fixtures need, sorry.
It's just that it's an arctic.
I know. The, I was, the 40 to 50-foot poles, I, I, holy, holy! I mean, we're not trying to illuminate the pole part, the 18-foot part. Those are some really tall units, so I'm really pleased to see the 15. The, well, let's just do fencing next. We got started on that. Or, wait, do we need to have, how can you?
I can build a motion.
Do, you want to build a motion? Thank you. So as far as the fencing goes, we had Vice Mayor Gurney weigh in on that.
Before we move on from lighting, I really want to say to the residents of Flynn Street that, I think I speak on behalf of the city, I hope I do. You have our commitment that we will do what it takes to not have light emissions from skate park, nighttime light emissions, be an issue in your residence. We will work to make that successful for everyone involved, and I would also say to the people who were good enough to show up tonight to express their position on this matter, this is yours to lose. You know, I really appreciate the efforts of all of you, especially Mr. Lane, over the years I've been on the council, to provide us with updates, and what I get to be a sense of kind of self-responsibility and oversight of the skate park and kind of keep the bad stuff out as much as possible. But, you know, the city and the police chief and the city council, we're kind of going out on a limb here to provide this, and please just support us in what we're trying to do, you know, and keep it squared away, so that, you know, we don't have a room full of people going, you won't believe what's happening at the skate park now that it's open and the lights are on and everything's going crazy. So it really is yours to lose. Thank you.
Okay. So now, shall we move on to fencing? Councilmember Jacob?
I think the fencing not being there and the lights being behind the area actually create a safer, more open, more transparent environment, which will actually make it better on the block, little in the block, so I'm very neighbor saying it doesn't work that way, but that's just not making sense to me, but in sort of one of my core values, around neighbors being neighborly and people engaging each other, I don't think fences accomplish that, and I see fewer fences to be a benefit when it comes to a park being available to our community and our public.
Thank you. Councilmember Glass?
Maybe I'm being kind of dense, but I didn't see of the fencing that's proposed. Are we talking, what kind of fencing are we talking about? Is it chain link, or is it going to be something more?
There's an existing chain link fence that was brand new when the skate park was built, that is at the kind of dividing line between the two properties, so that would be retained and then, you know, wider gates installed, so that that can, you know, during daytime hours can be opened up, get under this scenario. And then the existing six-foot chain link along Flynn Street, under this scenario, would be removed.
So I think I was getting that the, the neighborhood is not, doesn't really like the idea of removing that fencing, which I'm totally hearing that you are saying, but I have to admit that, for me, that the idea of having this fenced-in park feels like containing our youth in a, in this, like, in a cage or something, and the aesthetic of it is of concern to me, and, you know, I, I understand, I think, I'm hearing the concerns of the neighborhood, but I also think it would really make the neighborhood look nicer to see, you know, at that corner, some opened-up space and landscaping, et cetera. I think the concern was parking or traffic or something related to that. And I, maybe, well, maybe there's another solution to that, maybe we need to think about opening, opening up the park so it looks nicer, and you, and as you go down Laguna Parkway, you don't see this, like, kind of cage. But if the neighborhood's concerned about parking and people using that street, we could solve the problem with signage. So those are my thoughts. I, I just think, one of my, I think one of the most aesthetically problematic things in the town has been the chain link fence that goes through the middle of Ice Park. It's, and more chain link fences just don't add to a nice-looking neighborhood, it, it seems unfriendly. But I'm thinking, okay, let's try and make the park more parkish and open, but if there's a concern with the neighborhood, let's think about how signage could prevent the problems of traffic and parking on their street. Or maybe even, Mr. Mayor, what, there's, I think someone wanting to say something.
Very briefly, public comments been closed, please.
Our animals are used to being in the streets, our cats and everything use that street because there's hardly any traffic. If that is increased, we're going to have big problems. And plus, we walk, I walk, I'm down to go to the gym and everything, it's up in there, we just walk down the middle of the street. This is going to really pose problems for us.
Thank you.
With traffic as allowed in there.
Thank you.
Well, I say, let's figure out a problem to the traffic, but let's think about the aesthetic as well.
You know, I don't know if this is legally enforceable or not, but is there a way to put up signage that said, dead-end road, residents only, or not a three-street, residents only? I don't know, it's a public street.
I was going to suggest the same thing, I mean, it is a dead-end street, there's no outlet, and if you sign with a public parking on Laguna Parkway or something, so it's harder to discourage for me than driving in and people park out there and walking.
City Attorney?
We'll look into some appropriate signage, but we cannot do residents only.
Okay. I kind of thought that's what you might say. This is a question for the planning director. So I, I guess I never really grasped the fencing concept here. Was it envisioned that if the fence was left on Flynn, and the fence was removed from the skate park, existing skate park perimeter, that the only means of entry and egress and ingress to that whole facility would be through the existing gate at the skate park?
No, that'd be a new entry created on Flynn.
Okay. So, so there was going to be a gate on Flynn?
Yes.
Okay. So, so it's really not a secure area with the, well, I guess the gate's open to the skate park, so it's an open area. In other words, you've got the, I guess I'll just say, I think having the chain link fence on Flynn is not my preferred path to take. I, again, I understand the residents' concerns. It's ironic that the police department makes, you know, they, they, I thought, did they remove all the hedges around the perimeter of Ice Park so they could see in better?
Sound changes to the left.
And, so it would seem like they would want it to be as open as possible for visual enforcement or visual surveillance of a park area. In the staff report, there's the idea of putting in a gate between this, this skate park and this new area, and that seemed like a reasonable suggestion to me. Again, it's hard, because we're going to run into more and more of these things, these situations where we, like on the multi-use trail, where there's a community amenity that is being attempted to be, being created, that's inevitably going to impact some members of our community. And, and, you know, like I said earlier, I already have some of those impacts, but I live with it, and it's fine. And, you know, as we infill, we have an urban growth boundary, we're not getting any bigger, as things get more condensed and more compacted into the city, we're going to have more and more of these types of situations, and I think, you know, the greater good of the community probably takes precedence, if that all possible. You know, having said that, I, I think that retaining the existing fencing around the skate park with an additional gate on the Flynn side, and I would make it a big gate so it didn't seem like you were walking through some little gate. I like the idea of a large walling gate, made sense, as long as people wouldn't get injured playing with it, have to be secured in, in, you know, have to be locked open and locked closed. I think that's the preferred alternative, in my view.
All right. As far as the fencing goes, I, I'm in agreement with everybody that to put a fence around a public park just doesn't feel like where we want to be as a, as a community. The, before the city or the redevelopment agency actually purchased this parcel, the possibility that it could have been purchased by a private developer and, and housing, multiple-unit housing being put in here, the impacts from a park feel like something that the neighbors would appreciate, and I'm, I'm a little surprised at the, if this was being built across the street from my house, I'd be, I'd be jumping for joy that, oh boy, you know, a park, not more houses, I get to look at, you know, greenery and have this amenity that I can use. And so I think that, that not having the fence along Flynn Street is really the appropriate design for this, for this facility. The idea of having a large gate in the existing fencing between the new park area and the existing bowl area, I, I think that that's a necessity, too, so that it doesn't feel, when it's closed, or when it's open, that they could just go through this narrow little passageway. And the parking and the additional traffic along Flynn, I, I don't think the fence has any real bearing on that at all. There's going to be cars and people there regardless because of the new park. So I, I don't see where the fence is really going to have any impact on that at all. So I think that we have, unless there's more on the fence, okay? Now we'll move to, oh, please. Is there, would the unincreased, dirt, non-sidewalk area, is parking currently prohibited on that side of the street?
No. I don't think it is. Yeah, it's kind of an undefined area, in some extent.
So what I wrote down for this discussion, let's see if it makes consensus, is no fence boring Flynn Street, add appropriate signage for traffic and parking, add large gates between Flynn Street, park, and skate area.
Mr. Officer, my concern is if we make no parking on, say, that would be the east side of Flynn, that we might just push visitors into the existing residential parking, so people come home from work and there's no parking for them. I do know that we have several areas in town, whether they're enforceable or not, or are enforced, like along Ragel Road, that say residential, resident parking only. Again, I, I'm not trying to claw the, the existing residence neighborhood with cars, you know, I think it's unfair to like automatically take away all their parking spaces, just because all of a sudden we build a park across the street. So if there's some main manner that the city staff can work out to try to avoid that situation where all the parking is now unavailable to the residents, and that, I think that would be, go a long way to making this more acceptable to the residents of Flynn Street as well.
So perhaps we can ask the staff to come up with some recommendations for signage and other elements.
And staff will monitor the situation, and if changes are due, we'll bring it back.
Okay. So I believe our final item is the play structure, and I consulted with a user of these items. Natalie is 12 and half spider monkey, my niece, and she overwhelmingly chose option two. So for what that's worth, I know that the unit that's very similar to these, design-wise, up behind the school on Valentine, that's, that's a really, really popular item, so I'm, I'm really happy to see that this type of play structure is being proposed. So that's, that's my choice.
I second number two.
All right, any other?
I agree with number two.
I agree with number two. Okay, we're done.
Great, I can vote motion.
I would, I would like to request, though, that the planning staff do the final in-service testing and sign off.
Maybe we'll have a special councilor that will open it, so I'll give it a try. So we have someone building a motion to my right.
I have a motion that we, for my direction to, to use the I have a motion that we provide direction to use the 15-foot RAB lights with an 8:00 P.M. closure time to be reduced in one year for extension or reduction in after dark That we have no fence and add appropriate signage for traffic and parking, and have a large gate between the new Flynn Street Park area and the skate park area. We select option two for play equipment, and I need direct staff to proceed with the development of plans and specifications for the bidding process. The plans and specifications and updated cost estimates will still return to council for review prior to issuing a request for this.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I would want to question if we might wanna add in their, they're being proposed the one-year first period of 8:00 P.M., I wonder if we wanna add in their language that says "subject to the continued approval of the police chief," or, you know, in other words, the police chief maintains discretion to terminate that at his discretion if there's actions that require, that dictate that.
Or has the option to reduce it? I would amend it to add that.
Well, I think if the police chief has a problem, or the neighbors have a problem, then they report to the police chief, for instance, about parking or cars turning around, then it's gonna come back to us before that year is up. I figure they already have that authority through the police chief.
There's fancy meaning.
Yeah. I mean, I would expect if there were problems, we would hear about it, even with the one year review. I think the one year review is for the purpose of the neighbors knowing we're watching it, and also our skating community knowing that we're seeing how they're doing, and hopefully not gonna lose this.
I ask, if there is significant issues that are putting the youth at risk, I mean, our police chief would sleep at the park himself. I mean, we don't have a police chief that hangs out and watches, certainly. I feel complimentary.
Okay.
So... So, I just have one last question, I wanna make sure. My understanding is the fencing that we're suggesting here is gonna surround the skating area and it'll meet our insurance requirement.
Yes.
All right. So, I'm not sure which of you seconded that.
I'll withdraw my second.
Councilmember Glasses, are you okay with the... All right. So, all in favor of this?
Aye.
They're all opposed? And just thanks to staff and the consultants for coming back with this. I know that, you know, some of this was still, as the saying goes, in the weeds, but I appreciated the additional effort that everybody put into it.
Happy birthday now, go do your homework.
Yeah, go do your homework.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we're going to circle back to item number three, which is the update on the general plan process. Staff, please.
And this is just an update from our consultant. Should be relatively quick on how we're doing, what's been accomplished, and what's ahead.
Why change yours? I am. Okay. That's completely weird. Give it a try. Three loud trinkets. Sure. All right, if it please the council, I'll do the expeditions version, but if you have questions on anything, I'll be happy to expand. We are not requesting any council action or necessarily specific direction. We're just here to do a check-in, give you a progress and status update, tell you how it's going and where we're headed from here. So, all right, so the purpose of the general plan is just a quick reminder, defines a long-term vision for future growth within the city over the next 20 years. It's intended very importantly to reflect the goals and values of the city, builds on recent city planning efforts. We have an extensive public outreach and community participation process, and ultimately we aim to balance growth, conservation, and quality of life. So, this is a flow chart I looked familiar from our kickoff meeting, probably back about a year ago, I think. So, our key steps are, we started with visioning workshops, and then we prepared what's called the existing conditions report or background report. It's a lengthy detailed document on a number of technical issues. We prepared what's called an issues and opportunities report. This provided a detailed summary of all of the public input during the visioning workshops, sort of lays out how the process is working, and it provides some starting talking points that help set the trajectory of where we're heading with policy development, but basically it's meant to be a conversation Kickstarter with the public in the G-PAC. And we're in the midst of, we're about halfway through the G-PAC process, and we're developing the general plan goals, policies, and programs, so that's where we are now. Those will be packaged together in a draft general plan update. We'll prepare the environmental impact report to comply with CEQA, and we'll come back, do a series of public hearings for a general plan adoption and EIR certification. And the red bar on the left indicating there is ample opportunity for public participation throughout every single step and stage of this general plan update. The two workshops for the visioning workshops, in addition to a third housing workshop, were held in April, May of last year. They focused on communicating the intent of the general plan update and gathering public input. They helped us identify community values and priorities, and also identify key issues for the general plan update to address. And as I mentioned, input received during the visioning process is summarized in the issues and opportunities report. We also had a public survey available on the general plan website. We had over 700 respondents, which dwarfs anything we'd ever seen in other communities. So, we often ask them or getting out and providing information. The appendices, so we did two things in the issues and opportunities report. We tried to provide the reader's digest version, so it was sort of a digestible summary, but we didn't want to allow ourselves to overinterpret, so all of the raw data is in the appendix. So, if anyone really wants to cull through, for those of you at the visioning workshops, remember we did those postie exercises, posted notes, verbatim, everyone is typed up, they're in the appendix, and so we didn't wanna leave any room for us to misinterpret what the public was saying. So, all of that information is in there, in addition to all of the survey results. We have a number of published documents that have been accomplished to date. The existing conditions report was published in August. The issues and opportunities report was published in February, it's a bit ongoing. It's, the primary chapters are written in advance of G-PAC meetings, we'll put another issue subchapter in there. So, I think we really just have one more to do for land use as far as new topics for the G-PAC, so that's essentially written. The housing element, we've added a number of those, so we had the public review draft in November, the revised draft was finished in January, that's the document you looked at today. We have an iterative process going with the G-PAC, so what we'll do is we'll have a meeting as a group, and we'll talk policy issues and concerns, we'll introduce some new topics. So, for example, we'll talk about safety and noise, and they'll articulate their concerns and priorities related to safety and noise, and then we'll do another G-PAC meeting where we'll introduce some new topics. And then every second or third meeting, we come back and we've drafted policy sets where, so we don't want them to get too far down the process and say, well, remember we talked about noise nine months ago? So, we'll have them actually review, essentially a draft general plan element that we craft based on the input they've provided us. So, we kind of do this cyclical process of a few meetings of new topics, then a meeting to review the policy sets that we put together. So, to date, they've reviewed the policy sets for community health and wellness, safety and noise, and in April, they're gonna get another real big chunk of policy sets from us to go over. The G-PAC gets a lot of supporting materials and documentation in advance of each of their meetings. These are all posted online on the general plan update website, sebastibal.generalplan.org. And we've also published two general plan update newsletters, which have been widely distributed throughout the city. So, we've done a total of six meetings with the G-PAC. We had our first one in July, so we did an intro meeting, we did safety and noise, we've gone over housing and community health, we've gone over circulation. Our fifth meeting was a policy set review, safety, noise, and community health. Last month, we went over conservation and open space. We have a meeting with them next week, where we'll be doing economic vitality, community and urban design, and community services and facilities. We've got five or six additional meetings, and the only topic, the new topic after next week's meeting will be land use, and the remaining meetings with the G-PAC will be opportunities to go over the draft plan that we're putting together and the policy sets that they have not yet reviewed. This is a quick outline of what's going into your general plan. As you know, the general plan is made up of elements, so your seven required elements are land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, safety, and noise. We have a lot of flexibility on how we combine elements, so conservation and open space are likely to be combined into a single element, but they'll address all of those topics. Housing is read because it's sort of pulled out on its own process, as we went over in depth today. There's also some optional elements that we're preparing, so based on the direction for the RFP process, we're doing community health and wellness, urban design, community character, and also economic sustainability or vitality, we can kind of name it whatever we want. And community services and facilities is one that we are adding in. It's clear that that's a high priority for the community, it wasn't part of our initial work program. We were planning to address those topics sort of scattered throughout the general plan, but it's become apparent that the city really is gonna be well-served by standalone community services and facilities element, and so we're gonna prepare a standalone element while addressing those topics. Each general plan element that we put together, we'll make sure it addresses all the requirements of state law, that we'll all seek to avoid or mitigate environmental impacts, that'll be grounded in sound community planning techniques. Very importantly, that will reflect the goals and priorities of the community, and we'll make sure that they're internally consistent with other elements. And as I'm sure G-PAC members can attest to, the fact that this general plan is not an off-the-shelf plan where we're dusting off old work and sticking in the words "sebastibal" for the name of the city. This is very much a custom-built general plan. We're building off of the things that work in your current general plan, refreshing them up, we're addressing new topics, but this is very Sebastibal-specific as far as the plan that we're crafting and putting together for you. So, some of the next key steps in the process, the G-PAC will continue to meet over the next several months to finalize the draft goals, policies, and actions. So, as I had mentioned, we're adding two to three additional G-PAC meetings to our work program at no additional charge to the city. It was just becoming apparent that trying to cram all of this into the nine original meetings we proposed, the G-PAC was not going to have a comfort level that they had fleshed out the issues to their satisfaction, and we didn't wanna get to the all-important stage of, okay, here's a draft plan that you helped us write, get one meeting to look at it, and that's it. So, we think that everyone will be better served by these extra meetings, and we consider it a wise investment towards the success of this project. Following the G-PAC's efforts, we're gonna do a series of two public workshops or open houses, where it'll be a chance for the public to be introduced to the plan before it goes out for formal public review. We'll get additional input and feedback from the public. We've got some flexibility on exactly how we structure and time needs, we might do it after the last G-PAC meeting, or another idea we had was save one G-PAC meeting to occur after these public workshops, so we can go out and talk to the public, get some additional input on this draft that the G-PAC had put together, and go back to the G-PAC one last time and say, okay, here's the public info we got, do we wanna revisit anything or do any more additional refinements? We wanna make sure that this is not sprung on the planning commission and city council at the last minute, so we're gonna have multiple opportunities for the planning commission and city council to review and revise the draft plan before it's sent out for a 45-day public review and comment period. So, we'll encourage the council and the commission to come to these public workshops. We fully anticipate scheduling multiple meetings once the G-PAC's winding down their efforts to start showing you where we are with the draft plan, so that by the time it goes out for public review, and more importantly, by the time we come back for adoption hearings, you'll have gotten familiar with it and had a chance to put your stamp on it and address any of your concerns or issues. So, following the planning commission and city council's review of the draft plan before it goes out for public review, what we're essentially gonna ask you is, are we close? You don't, we're not gonna ask you for adoption, but we're gonna say, very importantly, the land use map and the key circulation policies and the land use policies, do you feel like we're pretty close to where you want this plan to be? And when you tell us that you feel that we're pretty close is when we'll get into the EIR, the environmental impact report, in earnest. One thing we really wanna avoid is having a plan that's crafted and then we do the environmental analysis of it, and the council tells us, well, we really wanna go in a different direction with the plan. That will run into challenges as far as having to redo technical analysis if we're changing land use designations, we have different road or traffic patterns, the assumptions change in our technical reports. So, again, well before adoption, we'll wanna have some kind of informal thumbs up that we're pretty close, so that we don't have to go back and redo environmental analysis. That's where things can get time-consuming and costly. Once the EIR is ready, we'll send the EIR and the draft general plan out for a simultaneous 45-day public review and comment period. Following the public review and comment period, the planning commission and the city council will have additional opportunities to review those public comments, see if we wanna make any additional changes to the general plan based on that public input. And we'll also prepare what's called the final EIR, so it'll summarize all the public comments on the environmental document and have written responses to all of those comments. And that's where we'll be at the stage to come to adoption hearing. So, you know, we're tentatively anticipating two meetings with the planning commission and two meetings with the city council to get the general plan adopted. If we need to do more, we will, but again, our hope at that time, by the time we come back looking for adoption, this plan won't be new, you'll be familiar with it, you'll be comfortable with it, and, you know, knock on wood, hopefully it's kind of just a formality at that point, 'cause we've gotten to where we want it before we end up at that stage. I always end with this slide at various meetings, so if any members of the public want to be added to the email notification list, they should contact Kenny, his email address is up there. And I would also strongly encourage people who are interested in the process to go to the general plan update website, it's sebastibal.generalplan.org. All of the technical reports, the published documents, upcoming meetings, meeting packets, the website literally grows week to week, and it's just a great clearinghouse resource for all things general plan related. And that concludes my formal presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may ask. And one other thing I might point out is, I'd like to say hats off to the council for the work you did in appointing the G-PAC members. We've got a few left here. Your G-PAC is awesome. They have been working well together, they come, it's so much information to go over, and they get a lot of reading assignments, and they come prepared, they're working well as a group, they show respect to each other and to the process, they're doing a good job of looking community-wide to make sure they address issues appropriately and not having necessarily personal narrow focuses. They're truly acting as ambassadors of the community to craft a plan that's going to work for Sebastibal. And we've talked about groups finding their footing throughout the process, I think maybe the first couple of meetings, there was a little bit of, ah, just lack of understanding of how their role is gonna fit into the crafting of the general plan, and as we work our way through, I think they're realizing that we're here to do a good job for them, and that they genuinely have a hand in crafting how this plan comes together, and the group's really found its footing, and they're working well together. So, I'm very proud and pleased with the feedback and the direction we're getting from them. It's serving Sebastibal very well.
Thank you. That was, that's always good to hear. So, the initial survey of over 700 respondents, I'm glad that another 150 people decided to weigh in, 'cause I did a few times myself.
I believe we had it set up where individual IP addresses couldn't fill it out more than once, so for those of you who did multiple ones, I know you were popping between the library and home computers.
I doubt that happened.
You were putting in the effort to get multiple responses, but we structured it so that if all couldn't sit there and submit the same comments any other times.
That's right. So, any questions of the consultant or staff on this? Any questions?
I saw that there are two public workshops that you're planning to do. What's the sort of announcement lead time for those meetings? Is it four weeks, is it 12 weeks? You know, I prefer 16 weeks, but I was wondering what kind of abilities are you providing for those two public workshops? I don't have a firm answer. Hearing that it's important to have adequate lead time, we'll make sure we build in as much lead time as possible. What we don't wanna do is announce them before we know we're ready, 'cause we're gonna be unrolling the general plan in its preliminary draft form, so I would, I would be very uncomfortable trying to do it now, 'cause it's still a few months down the road. With that said, we aren't under time crunches with the general plan, and I get the distinct impression from this council that it is much more important to do this right than to hit some artificial arbitrary deadline, we don't pass state deadlines on this. With that said, our intent and our path, we're on schedule, and we intend to move expeditiously through this process, but, you know, if we wanna push a meeting back by a month in order to give folks more time, so I would anticipate a six to eight weekly time for those public workshops, and we can work with staff to make sure it's widely noticed, but we're not dealing with artificial state deadlines on this, so we can fit it into what works and make sure we're not falling on holiday, you know, Thanksgiving time.
What is the anticipated completion? What is the anticipated completion date of the general plan?
Done, adopted. Four-ish months from now, back next spring?
So before September of 2016?
I certainly hope so.
Me too.
If you could tell us. You know, as a consultant, it's in my best interest to just keep on moving. I mean nothing by dragging things out or dragging my feet. So we're very interested in just keeping the course. So, you know, don't quote me, but I think next spring we'll be back for adoption.
I just want to say, I remember we were choosing De novo. Are we making the right decision? We really think it's the right decision. From my, I've heard from the public, from the G-PAC members, I think in the beginning, there was some concern, there were some trust issues, even maybe some conspiracy theories going on with De novo. But those have subsided. I haven't been hearing them. And your reports that you bring to the council and the energy and your willingness to be amenable and really seem to move with what's being provided, I really appreciate and I hope that you continue on all levels. I am concerned where we saw today where a timing issue came into play under the EIR, that things just might take a little longer, a little more to Microsoft, but just being cautious of that as we finish up the contract together. But overall, I mean, nine plus plus out of ten. I really appreciate everything you've provided.
Thank you very much.
Nine plus plus, yeah, I feel good.
I'll take that really.
Thank you, or what you did add to the process because I think you're understanding our community. We are very detailed, very thorough. We do like to talk things over. And one important point that I've learned tonight is that the land use element is going to be really the key piece in this work because everything kind of fits in there. So I would hope that you could give our G-PAC members sufficient time in their measure of what's sufficient, so they have the lead time to read and study. And then I was wondering if there is in the process a way for that component to get council review so that we're brought into that understanding before everything's all done and all timed. So that's one thought I have for you.
Absolutely. A couple of points I would make to that is it is not an accident that we put the land use map and the land use element at the tail end of the G-PAC process. Based on experience, we try and start with issues where we can ease in and figure out how everybody's going to work together and everybody understands their roles. And land use is really where the rubber meets the road in the general plan. If we put it at the tail end so that the G-PAC will have, you know, a year together, working together to flesh out their issues and what... All elements are equal with the land use element being more equal than others. And so when we get to that key stage, making sure that they're sort of ready and prepared to tackle the big one at the end. And we would be more than happy to, in many forms or multiple forms, come to the council with that. We've successfully done a joint workshop to the planning commission and city council and do it more of a workshop style where we're just getting input and collaboration. And we'd be very happy to do that. And the last quick point I wanted to make was the additional two to three meetings that we're going to be adding here at the end of this was to accommodate an extra time for the G-PAC to be able to do land use over a couple of days and not try and cram it into one meeting.
Thank you, yeah. I think we've learned that's really important. And I'd like us to consider being involved in some kind of workshop or joint meeting or something. So we're informed as to that. What I'm going to say is kind of a summary element before we get all of everything in this kind of official, here it is, what do you think, way. You know, we've got to get a study up on it a little bit first.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
More than happy to comment.
Any comments or questions?
Actually, I said I had none, but I thought two things. One is, if I remember correctly, there were some concerns expressed about the difficulty in accessing the general plan website, the general plan update website or the general plan update portion. In other words, people were having trouble finding it. Am I, am I wrong on that one? I'm just hoping it's been fixed if it actually did.
I think there was a specific issue on a particular day as to where something was posted, and it was posted on the city website. It hadn't yet been posted on the general plan website. We talked to the person who brought it and told them how to get to it on the city website. But currently, that still wasn't satisfactory. But I think within a day, the consultant's general plan website was, the information was up there. So, yeah. We hear those complaints and sometimes there might be a dear to, if there's a glitch to fix it or post something, that will happen.
Well, in line with, you know, lead time for notification of meetings, you know, obviously, we want to get the widest notification of our citizens. And so we need to make sure everything's functional and is easily accessed and you don't have to be a computer genius to figure out how to get there. And then the only other thing I have is, I assume that a copy of the draft update and the EIR will be on the website for people to access.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. And I do give you my marks for the process to date.
Definitely your future.
I have one question that's probably directed towards the planning director. We're still on target as far as budgets?
Yes.
Thank you.
No additional expenses, no additional new costs per month was originally budgeted.
Okay, which this next topic may break that rule. But as long as you're here tonight and we're all here, yeah, I think that it makes sense for us to try to schedule that other meeting that was talked about for the housing element. I know that you can't be here on the seventh. Is it the seventh?
The seventh. I was just going to say, the clerk asked me to provide Canyon with some dates in March that will work. Candidly, I am honestly booked every Tuesday through the end of April. Everybody in the world does meetings on Tuesdays and so...
Well, if it's necessary, because this is something that's really important to us here. We can entertain another day because we understand how important it is for you to be in attendance. So we can be flexible as well, so.
We should talk about Monday nights as well or other dates.
Okay, so we'll do that via email and Doodle and those things. Get something scheduled.
And that'd be really helpful to do right away, like tomorrow, to nail the date down because some of us are traveling and some of us have schedules and get really crowded quickly.
Yeah, so that's certainly the intent.
I'm in that same boat, so I'd like to lock it down as soon as possible.
I know, I know.
That means we all need to be committed to checking our email and filling out a Doodle poll tomorrow. I think that the biggest problem we have is that sometimes we don't call responses Doodle poll.
Right, so.
That would be me.
There was no name. I had that in all of that. Okay, so this was, this was just a presentation, so I think unless we're done. Thanks for hanging out and accommodating the...
Thank you guys. We've seen a lot more meetings. We've started getting to the good stuff here.
Right. All right, so we have one more regular council agenda item, which is the discussion and consideration of action to fill the vacancy on the DRB.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
That's right.
As I'm recusing myself, in the event that there's no council reports, staff reports, correspondence at all at the end, if... Can I be excused?
I don't have any reports to make. Anybody else? Have a good evening.
Good luck.
You gotta have some love, right?
It's like he thinks it's in our closed session. All right, staff report, please.
Well, they've been in a vacancy on the design review board with a resignation of one member. And that number was listed in category A, which is the landscape architect or licensed architect category. A person's term was going to expire December 31st, 2015. So staff has brought you this evening several options, which occurred to staff as potential options for filling that vacancy, noting that you had had recent interviews. Option number one was to consider making the appointment based on those interviews. Option number two would mention that you have the opportunity to interview the two applicants who were unable to attend that interview process. Or option three, there may be other options that come to council members. Staff said option three was to announce and advertise the vacancy through our routine process. And then options two and three, you'd make the appointment at a future meeting, but you do have the opportunity to make the appointment tonight if you so desire.
Any questions of staff? Any public comment? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would first like to commend Bob O'Shaughnessy for his service on the DRB. I thought he was a great force and added quite a lot of quality work for us. And I very much regret his resignation out of incompatibility, his perceived incompatibility of the group. He sent us a lengthy email and I think he detailed more than 14 complaints with the DRB. And I think before we make an appointment or address the issue of how we will appoint and when, we need to make sure to respond to his concerns. So I'd like to go through those very, very quickly and let you know my feelings because I think it will inform you as to where I want to go with the appointment process tonight. A potential future meeting is certainly following the term ends December 31st of all the years following. Mr. O'Shaughnessy stated very clearly that he felt that he was not thanked for his service. So I would hope we could do something official, perhaps a certificate or a letter of recognition, a combination from the mayor. I know, I think all of us in the volunteer positions say at some time or another, this is a thankless job. And in many ways, that's the reality. If I've been remiss in thanking him, I'm sorry for that. And that's why I want to publicly acknowledge his service now. He also complained that, short of thanking him, he didn't get interactions, responses to his emails. And I happen to know that, or believe that that was a very emotional remark and I don't want to deal with the inaccuracies of it. I know I individually had a number of conversations with him, with other council members where we went over his drawings redesigning downtown and the plaza, et cetera. So I think there has been some interaction, obviously not to his satisfaction. He comments that the board is comprised of members without any experience in building design. And later in his email complains that we look to licensure as one of the indicia of experience. And those two conflicting points were hard for me to reconcile and I don't think they are reconcilable. The board, he felt, was too large, that our community couldn't supply qualified candidates. And I'm not sure that that's true. And I hope that we will keep this number on the DRB. He mentions that there are no effective guidelines, no statement of principles or objectives, no rational or comprehensive and constructive system of rules. And there are a couple of comments as to how the board has conducted itself. And my thought there is that if the board finds something is wrong, it needs to communicate from the members to the board leadership that there is some problem and the board leadership can take responsibility for correcting that. The board chair has access to our planning staff, to our city manager, to council members. So if something's not working for them, I would really encourage them to be proactive and say, we need training or this isn't working. We want our committee to revise the guidelines, whatever it might be, so that they hear at least from me tonight encouragement to take a hold of their responsibilities and make sure they can follow through on them successfully without me having to go in and micromanage the board. I don't intend to do that. I don't do that with any of our boards. My notion of democracy is that the more of us who are involved in the decision-making, the more democratic it is. I think we made a wise decision not to attend the G-PAC meetings so that as we heard tonight, we have a 15-member panel who is high-function representing more members of the community than we could as only five. So let me go quickly because I realize I'm taking a lot of your time. He says there's no system for self-improvement, no feedback, no discussions, no formal evolution towards constructive change. Again, I think that can be something that a board member can do for the board itself. It can come internally from the board. What I've noticed of this group, for instance, compared to other groups, a lot of times we get stuck places in our conversation or we disagree. And we use humor to lighten it up and get through. I worked with other groups who didn't find anything funny when we disagreed. So I know there are ways for boards to work through their own issues and make sure they're effective. He complained that the design presentations were poorly illustrated, incomplete, inaccurate or even fudged. Again, I think if there are concerns that a board has about the staff or the process, they can have their own discussion in public about those and refer those matters up to the council with their recommendations. I think this is about the fifth time I've said I'd really like them to be proactive, dealing in their own hot seat with their own issues and letting us know what they are instead of asking us to fix those. There's no requirement for the project applicant's design status. Literally, anyone can do designs well. Maybe that's a bigger problem in the world. I don't, you know, I'm not an architect. I don't design things. I can play around and doodle and draw. But it's up to the property owner to retain whoever it is they want. And that team can go through our process and be critically reviewed. Most designs are presented in as final designs. Again, this might be a process problem that the DRB members experience as they're seated and if they have a recommendation as to how we might do preliminary review or collaborative review or community outreach, I would really like them to suggest that. I think they know more from their experience than we do how to manage them. Says appeals to the council regarding DRB denial is frequently met with approval. That's not, that's not my statistic on that issue. And I'll grant that he has his own opinion. There's no field supervision for actual compliance and no ongoing system for... Okay, so let me stop at that. I think we do know in our community that the city is very skeleton-staffed. We don't have a lot of budget money for enforcement and we do the best we can with what we do have. There are ways that appointees can help the staff by giving notices to whatever problems are they find out there on the street about compliance. No ongoing system of member evaluation, encouragement or suggestions for improvement. What I'm hearing in this is maybe there is some kind of need for training, how to be a board member or conversation with staff, keeping the pulse of how things are going. It seems like the members on the board perhaps need to talk between themselves how they're doing or maybe have what I suggested before, some kind of facilitation where they can air their issues and the shortcomings that they see in our process. But it says there's a preoccupation with requiring board members being licensed professionals as an image-based superficiality. Again, licensure is one of the indicia of experience. And I think that helps us understand who's on. Obviously, licensed people can have no taste and the people who aren't licensed can have great taste. And that's what keeps the worm going, I think. There's a question about the alternate role and I think we should be clear tonight if that is a participatory role or simply a quiet presence. I know we talked about that earlier, but it's coming up again. And then the last comment was presuming that a nice guy... And then the last comment was presuming that a nice guy approach to every civic issue works every time and is the best policy is naive. I don't really have a comment to that. So I was really taken aback that somebody would have such a strong opinion of problems with the DRB and wait so many years to express them to the council in this kind of dramatic compelling way. So in closing, I want to make sure that we give the message to our DRB, to our planning commission, to our complete street people, that if they find something lacking in their experience, we need to know. And the first level would be to talk to the chair of their board. If that needs to be agendized to have a full group discussion, I would encourage every board to do that. And if it can then be referred to the council, either through the chair of that board or through staff, I would welcome that we have a direct and open conversation to make sure that our systems are operating really effectively. Because when someone volunteers this long and this hard and does such quality work and feels such a great measure of frustration, I think in many ways, we failed that volunteer. And I would like us to do better by the people who serve us and encourage them to let us know how we can help them. So it's fulfilling on both ends. Thank you. Actually, I would like to hear from you. I feel like we had interviewed a number of candidates at our last meeting. I think two of the four of us commented that we had a tough choice to make between very qualified people and I'm ready to appoint tonight from the pool of people who previously applied. To reopen this, I think, reopen it and draw more people in just means somehow we weren't satisfied the group that we had that we just said was really great. And to me, that doesn't make any sense. We had a good group, this group needs to reform with new people and keep going. And so for me tonight, whichever option it is, I would like to appoint this evening. I think we may have to have a discussion about categories and who's in what category and if we have problems with categories. And again, it's up to you and I'd like to hear from each of you.
Okay, thank you. More discussion?
I'd like to address some of the things that Councilmember Gurney said. One of the concerns that she was speaking about regarding our former DRB board member, a feeling of lack of training, a feeling of lack of, you know, guidelines, blah, blah, blah. I'm wondering if the League of Cities has any training materials for DRB members. It might be interesting to see if they have training for DRB employment entries. And see if they have any kind of, like, videos, written materials, any kind of training materials like that.
The comment that staff did provide training, the planning director provided training on several occasions and then there was one occasion where I provided training as well.
Okay. Then, you know, another thing to think about is that I know our mayor and one of our fellow council members has been working on a new set of design guidelines, which I think will be very helpful to the DRB and that's in the right direction. We do already have some design guidelines and I think they need to be updated and expanded upon. But I am very grateful to the work that Councilmember Eard and our mayor are doing so that we do are giving expanded guidance to the DRB. And lastly, on the nice guy thing, I think that we should always be respectful of people that present their, their design and their vision for whatever their home or whatever building they're working on, that that's part of, you know, the golden rule that we should always treat the public and applicants respectfully. That if you treat people well, even when you say no, you get a better outcome in the long run because when you insult people, they walk away mad and that's, that does not, you don't end up with a good long-term result in relationship with people when you treat them in a disrespectful or condescending manner. So I think, or I would like to see everybody on all of our boards to try and communicate effectively and respectfully even when they say no to an applicant. I think that's very important. So, but most of all, I think we want to move forward with finishing these design guidelines that you all have been working on. And I know, you know, there were some very understandable reasons why that got delayed a little bit, but I think it could really add a lot to the process to have those design guidelines done. So all that said, which was too much to say probably, I am somewhat, I do think that since our city policy is to try and get licensed professionals when we can, that if we are able, it would be nice to appoint a licensed professional to the Design Review Board. And I, there's one other licensed professional that is on this list here, but whom we have not interviewed. And I know a lot of us, I think, would probably like to get on with this, but it's hard for me to conceive of appointing someone who has not been interviewed. I do not want to open up the whole process again, totally do not want to do that, but I tend to think it would be nice to interview the two people that did not make it on the day that we did our initial interviews. But I am, I am open to hearing from the rest of the council on that matter. I think we do have, there are some really good applicants here already. But it would be nice if I could meet all of the applicants.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to recall, there was a applicant who had specific skills for conflict resolution. I didn't recall which applicant it was.
It's Peter Daly and I was just checking to see if he's licensed in some way, not even as a contractor.
Yeah, I support option one. And I support option two, but I would want to maybe specifically call back certain people from the original round. So it would be the two people we missed and maybe we specifically pick one or two people from last time that were sort of our top two and interview those four just to get me fresh, I guess, in my head. But I'm open to quite a range of options in this decision. And if it was done March 17th, I'm comfortable with that. And comfortable with the decision, the three of you being here as a decision-making board.
All right. I probably have a comfort level with one of the applicants that we did not have the opportunity to interview and that would be Alexis Persinger because our paths crossed professionally. And so I have that experience with Alexis. And he's much like one of our other appointees, Carrie. He's invested in this town, he's invested a lot in this town with the construction of a new building downtown. He's done work for the Center for the Arts, he's done work for the Community Center. He, I think, would make an outstanding board member. And should there be, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with not interviewing Alexis and actually moving him forward as a, as a, as my highest choice on this list. I don't see a reason to reopen the application process. And if making the interviews of the two individuals that we did not talk with would, would help, I think that that would, I'm okay with that, but I'm also okay with moving forward tonight. I certainly understand Vice Mayor Gurney's desire to appoint somebody and, and get on with it. So.
Well, I feel that even more strongly understanding that our next meeting, Councilmember Jacob won't be here, so it ends up being an appointment by the three of us. I think a four-member board is problematic because of the two-two split. And we could actually probably get to that tonight. And so I think it's important to keep the conversation going tonight, even at the 10 o'clock hour, so that we make a decision that the four of us find acceptable, so that it gets done and is done well. I feel that it would be uncomfortable to give some candidates a second opportunity to interview. Just because, you know, we put this out, we posted it, Mary did her best to schedule people at times and I'm sorry, the two people weren't able to come. If we re-interview them, then they're fresh in our minds and the other people we interviewed are not so fresh in our minds. So I'm uncomfortable for that reason. If we re-interview people, then it seems to me if I was somebody who heard about this from the press coverage during our, and I didn't get a chance to be interviewed, I would think that was unfair. So almost every way I look at this, I go, well, I think we, I really think we should appoint. If we re-interview, if we open the interview so that the two people who missed were able to come and then we scheduled some other people, a second interview, we've got that unfairness of some people having two, two chances and someone getting one and then what if some of those people with a second chance couldn't come? I mean, it just gets really complicated. That's the reason I thought it would be good to appoint tonight. I also have met Alexis, I don't have the exposure to him that our mayor, that the architect does. His new building is just on the other side of Sushi Han from what I call my building. But I don't know that it didn't Ramire design it. And I've met Alexis there, I know too that he works for a number of school districts. In fact, he worked for my husband's school district for some grand remodel plans there. That didn't happen because the state took the money away. So, so I know he's been involved in the community as well. He meets the requirement of putting a licensed professional in the place, but my understanding is for many years, we've chosen amongst the pool and needed to disregard licensure because it didn't necessarily meet at the time with the people we had and the openings we did have. I understand some people have represented themselves to be licensed and the public has researched and told us they weren't licensed. So there we are. I would be satisfied to discuss Alexis in greater detail and also Peter Daly. I found him to be an important candidate last time because he has experience on the DRB. And he would be somebody who could jump into the work and do it right away without that kind of slower ramp-up time. His experience in mediation in the construction industry, I thought, was really good because apparently we have a group that, you know, needs, needs to communicate effectively and the people are sensitized to emotion, emotion entering conversation and facilitating conversation. I think that just helps the work that goes on. So I think we have at least those two candidates. I know several of us were supportive of Gary Chris last time. And so perhaps we want to suggest his name or other people. Let's, let's see who's there and let's see if we can find someone we might appoint.
I have some additional comments and that's, actually, my, my two top candidates would be Peter Daly or Alexis Persinger. But I haven't actually met Alexis Persinger, but just from his resume and his reputation, that I, I'm feeling like, I like Peter Daly's expertise at mediation regarding construction issues. But I also feel that we need somebody, we need someone who has a passion for design on the board. And I, that's my impression of Alexis Persinger, who is a licensed architect. So I think we're getting a nice mixture of expertise, civil engineering, plan checking, the, the opinions of, you know, another person who's not a licensed designer but is a designer, and then general members of the public. But we don't have a licensed architect. So that's where I'm kind of thinking about Alexis, even though I think a lot of Peter Daly's expertise as a mediator. So those are really the two people that I'm thinking about, which it sounds like there's other people thinking about them as well. But that's my, my thinking is I do think it is important that our DRB have members who are passionate and really care about buildings and design as art, you know? I mean, not, not as, you know, final, but who really have a commitment to design, a design ethic. Who want to look at things that are submitted in our community and say, wow, that is just so incredibly ugly. It just does not fit in our community. I think we want somebody who is thinking about those sorts of things as well as the technical aspects of designing a building. Not that we're wanting people just to have their personal opinions about things, but somebody who brings, brings to the attention of that board the, the quality of design. I think it is important for our town, particularly for our commercial area.
The, the expertise that Mr. Daly brings in the world of construction mediation, it, it sounds like it would be a relevant topic to the DRB, but as somebody who's been on the other side of that table, it really, in, in the narrow focus of the DRB, it, it is, it is about design. It's about, it's about context in the, in the whole, it's about, it's about architecture. It's about landscape architecture, it's about designing spaces. And that's the skill that certainly I feel that Alexis Persinger would bring to the board over Peter Daly. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that Peter Daly's skills aren't quality and necessary in the world, I'm just not sure that they're the most appropriately put to use on the DRB.
Can we just like add a second alternate position or appoint them both? I mean, that's agenda, I mean, you're just wanting, right? I'm just saying, wouldn't you like more people came, more input, more time?
Well, there are more openings coming up. I would say, I would be here soon.
I would say I have a really hard time appointing someone I've never met. I do have two references though that I trust highly here at the DIES for Alexis. And I do have a strong desire to increase the number of licensed professionals on the DRB. I do think that Peter Daly caught me early on and from the interviews, definitely my choice. I didn't remember his name, but I remember the things that I liked about his interviews.
I didn't remember his name, but I remember the things that I liked about his interview and I remembered the conflict resolution issues. But the conflict resolution is not a skill set that we need in the DRB. It's a skill set we need with the personalities we have on the DRB. Right, that's so... So, because it's self-clashing there and that's been told was by the DRB members, I'm not misinterpreting here. But I still have a I believe licensed professional requirements we still lack on the review board and that it is a considerable hurdle that we have to overcome before adding skill sets other than licensed design professionals.
So here's the skill set that I see that I think would be helpful. I mean, in addition to everything else I've said, in a mediator, mediators are very sensitive, I mean, are very aware about power balance and power imbalance and they don't go be affected by power imbalance. And I think we have a board with some very strong personalities on it, many of whom probably want to dominate the whole meeting and have things go their way. And we need a group that's going to achieve a better result working collaboratively than would happen individually. So it's important to me that the person who is appointed can be expressive without being overpowered by strong personalities. What's this? And I, you know, before we get to emotion, I think it's important to, to thank the number of people who recruited with great energy and got us the nine applicants that came forward last time. It took, you know, a lot of, I wouldn't say behind the scenes, but it took some community networking to encourage people at this stressful moment to put their names in and become applicants. And I want to thank the several people I know who did that recruitment effort so that we have this many people. So what I know is listening to you guys, I'm hearing an interest in having a licensed professional. And perhaps that overrides somebody with different skill and, you know, a different applicant. So I would go forward and move Alexis as the nomination for the open.
I will second that motion. Is there any other discussion?
I think if we could encourage Peter Daly to keep his name in when things come around again, that would be really helpful. I mean, and others on this list too. I mean, Avery's going to be licensed in a while.
It's a very strong list, so, yeah.
Right, right. I think the last time I asked staff specifically to reach out directly to all the people who have applied this last time in the next round, to ask them to reapply. And whatever we did for this final search, and I think it was more than just city staff, I think it was a whole community engagement to find applicants, but whatever we did this time was right. We can do it for planning commission, if we can do it for arts commission. I mean, whatever happened, this was a successful search and we should take note and try to follow again. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're about to vote, but I do have one question after we vote, okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Okay, so the question is about the appropriate role of the alternate. I think we really need to square that away in public. And I don't need for there to be misunderstandings about how the alternate should, should conduct his or herself or not conduct his or herself there. So I think it's good to know. What is that role? Is that an active participating role or is it a passive listening role in the case of some future absence?
The, for, I think about the last 20 years, the alternate has participated in discussions equally with other board members, however their vote only counts if there's an absence or a conflict of interest. So that, I'm not aware of, I mean, one board member, you know, had raised, former board member raised this concern. I'm not aware of anybody else in all these years that has had a similar concern. And I think in prior years, I think the board has valued the discussion and the different perspectives, including that of the alternate. So there may have been, I don't know, personality clash or something like that in this instance, but generally speaking, the alternate has contributed and the board has welcomed that. The downside of time that they need to quietly is that, I think then it's likely that they will not attend meetings. And until we call them and say, we need you for this one, and we don't always know that, of course. So that they may disconnect from the regular meetings and then kind of y'all in terms of understanding what, you know, how the board works and what they're looking for. So, but that is how many, many boards, alternates do exactly that. They're not up there, they're sitting to the side, not participating or maybe not even attending. So that is not uncommon, but this is the way the alternate has operated at DRB. And I would, from my point of view, it seems to have worked well.
And so that's not something that's in the ordinance specifically, whether they speak or not? I would say if that's our 20-year history, as far back as our planning director has recalled for us, then I'm fine with that too. I think everybody is. And then I would just suggest to staff, if there is help that you can offer, I don't know if it's counseling or training or whatever, I would encourage you to offer that through the chair of the DRB to those members.
And in the past, we've had alternates who are the most experienced people in the world of design and to have them silenced, I think that would be doing our community a disservice at that point in history, given the council's necessity to move people around to different categories. So I think that just going with what we've been doing, I think is fine.
Works alright.
Okay. All right. 401. Any reports, anything else, correspondence? All right, we're adjourned.